Senate will come to order for this Tuesday, November 2nd, 10 o'clock in the morning. Roll call, please.
Senate roll call for Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. Senator Anderson.
Here.
Baldwin.
Here.
Biedman.
Here.
Boner.
Here.
Bouchard.
Here.
Case.
President.
Cooper.
Here.
Driscoll.
Here.
Ellis.
French.
Here.
Burfee.
Here.
Gru.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Hutchings.
Here.
James.
Here.
Kinsky.
Here.
Cole.
President.
Cost.
Here.
Landon.
Here.
McCune.
Here.
Nethercot. Tappas. Excused. Perkins.
Excused.
Rothfuss.
Here.
Salazar.
Here.
Schuler. Scott. Excused. Mr. President.
Here.
Steinmetz.
Here.
Wasserberger.
Excused.
And President Dogstetter.
Here.
Mr. President, 26 members present for excused.
Thank you. Prayer by Reverend Gilbert.
I must say, you look more prayerful at 10 o'clock than you did at 7 o'clock. Jesus said, "When you are praying, do not heap up empty phrases. Pray then like this: Our Father in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come; your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive our debts as we forgive our debtors; and do not bring us to the time of trial, but rescue us from the evil one. Gracious God, forgive us for any phrases empty of knowledge, love, kindness, and concern for the well-being of others. Restore to us the desire and ability to speak truth and kindness, to do acts of mercy, and to walk humbly with you. At the end of each day, may we be able to say, 'I have done your will here on earth as it is done in heaven.' In tasks easy and decisions difficult, we await your daily bread of clear wisdom, correct words, and commendable decisions. In your holy and eternal name, we humbly and honestly pray. Amen."
Senator Gru, would you make some prayers? Thank you, Reverend. Thank you, Senator.
Mr. President, your Journal Committee reports that the Journal of November 1st has been read and recommends that it be approved. Signing for the chair, Senator Mike Gru.
Any objections? They're being done. The report is adopted. Bills on second reading. Senate File 1001, second reading of the Senate file.
House Bill?
Oh, excuse me. Got into a routine there. House Bill 1001, second reading of the House Bill. Thank you for your observation.
House Bill 1001, COVID-19 vaccine employer mandate.
Thank you. There are amendments. First reading, uh, second reading amendment, excuse me, first reading amendment to House Bill 1001 on second reading. Senator Steinmetz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move-
Senator Steinmetz, let's have her read it.
Oh, thank you.
House Bill 1001, second reading amendment number one to engross copy, corrected copy, page 10, lines 1 through 9.
Senator Steinmetz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move second reading amendment number one to House Bill 1001 and ask the body for its favorable consideration. Body, if you go to page three of your committee of the whole amendment, as you received it from us yesterday and was passed into the bill, what this simple amendment does is in Section 2 of the Act, it would be line 11 on page three of your amendment, it just goes in and after Section 2 of this act shall, we delete the word "not." So it would say, "Subject to the provisions of this section, the provisions of Section 2 of this act shall not be enforced until the date of final disposition or resolution, including during penancy of any appeal and during any period between the entry of a judgment or mandate or an appeal of the judgment, et cetera." And basically, what this does is changes the bill back, keeping the new language, which was very good, but changes the bill back to its original intent, which says that we will not enforce this federal mandate until after we have a judgment and we've exhausted all court cases. It's a policy decision for the body and consideration for you, but as I originally signed on to this bill, that was the provision, and so I felt the need to correct that. So thank you, Mr. President.
Discussion on the amendments. Second reading amendment number one to House Bill 1001. Any discussion? Oh, Senator Rothfuss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want, I'd ask the sponsor for clarification or another proponent, the explanation sounded as if it did exactly the opposite of what it seems to do. It's my understanding, it's striking the "not" in the language of the standing committee amendment, which would shift it from "shall not be enforced" to "shall be enforced." I'm getting a nod, so that's what apparently it does. So this would, as I understand it, make this act entirely effective throughout all of the court hearings, and basically upon signature, it would go into effect, and all of the provisions of this would immediately become effective, not waiting for completion. I guess at that point, I would ask, Mr. President, why not just delete paragraph A? Is there something left in paragraph A? It seems at that point that it eliminates paragraph A effectively. That's the same thing. So I'm curious if there's something I'm missing there as to what it would do to have a "shall be enforced" as opposed to just removing paragraph A. Thank you, Mr. President.
See if there are any others before we go back. Senator Kinsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, so as written now, the intent is that we pass what we think we need to pass, but knowing whatever we pass conflicts with federal law, and we don't want to place our employers in a position between a rock and a hard place, whether they pick to be in violation of federal law or state law. The way it's enforced now says, "We're going to pass this, and we are going to sue, and our law will set on the books but not be enforced until we resolve whether the federal laws are constitutional or not." Now we're about to say, "We will enforce this law starting Friday, whenever it's signed." And we don't care if there's a conflict between what the feds are telling you and what the state's telling you. So I just, I need to have something that I can tell the hospital when they call me and say, "The administration's going to cut off their Medicare/Medicaid if they comply with the state law instead of federal law." I just need to know what to tell the hospital, and I need to know what to tell the businesses. I need to know what to tell the employers. So I'll be all ears. Thank you, Mr. President.
Discussion. Vice President Hicks.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, members of the body, I'm not inclined to prognosticate as to what the federal government may or may not do, to suppose that they're just going to reject your Medicare/Medicaid payments as a presupposition, that we don't know the final outcome or the disposition of that. Quite frankly, I think that discussion is yet to be resolved, and it will be resolved in the court system. But to come out here and make definitive statements that the federal government's going to come in and do this if we do that, I think is, at the very base, speculative. There may be some basis for it. There may even be some concerns for it, Mr. President, but I cannot control things that I can't foresee that are facts in the future. What I do know, that we as a legislative body has a responsibility, and we can pass laws, and that's what this does. And my colleague from Albany County is exactly right. It says that our law shall stand. Does it create a potential conflict? I certainly think it does. Mr. Chairman, we're a state. We're supposed to look after the interests of the state. Now, we can have a debate whether, what that interest should look like and what means and mechanisms we should deploy to accomplish that, but at the end of the day, we need to make a decision whether we're going to prostrate ourselves here before the federal government and just say, "You can do whatever you want. We won't do anything as a Wyoming legislature." I understand the argument and the concerns. I also understand that we have a responsibility, and that's to come down here, and we debate it, we'll vote on it, and at the end of the day, I think this is the right thing to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussion? Majority floor leader, Driscoll.
Mr. President, I've stood off the side, not commented at all on what's gone, because I think we've kind of done a bill that actually was to the point it did no harm. It was a bill that, with this existing language, actually didn't do harm. As legislator, the statements you heard are absolutely true. We do, we get paid to come down here and to do things to represent our constituents. And I'm here to ask, who's going to take care of our constituents and our businesses when we're in that lurch and you're getting sued? I'm a small business guy, and we pass this law, and it may be before you get a special session, I may be faced with the very same thing, and I realize it's what ifs, but we don't have time to act. The really interesting part is, this does put business directly in the crosshairs. That's exactly what it does. It doesn't do individual, it puts business in the crosshairs. And it has real consequences. It's, we pass this law, there's real consequences to it, what happens. And I think the feds have made it very clear, I'm not going to titillate on what they're going to say or do, but I can tell you this, actions speak louder than words, and they've done action already around the country. It's pretty clear, they take it very seriously. And I hate to see us go down a path that in bad economic times, we, whether it's in truth or not, affect whether businesses stay in this state, whether they hire people in this state, and how they proceed forward. Don't want to say the sky's falling, but I really don't want to have my hands on something that our really number-one job is to make the state a better place and promote what it does and enhance it economically and make it a better place for our citizens. And rolling dice on what the feds may or may not do is not included in that. I'd encourage you to vote this down.
Senator Biedman.
For those listening, we are on second reading amendment number one to House Bill 1001. Senator Biedman.
Thank you, Mr. President. On and for the amendment, bringing it back to the original intent of the bill. To answer the previous speaker's question, in the standing committee amendment yesterday, we put in there protections for small businesses and businesses in Wyoming to join a class-action lawsuit, and we put $10 million in the pot to help them out. So it's not like we're leading everybody into this battle unarmed. We are fully arming ourselves and our businesses to go into this fight with the federal government. And yeah, there's going to be collateral damage either way. If we go and we tip the scales in favor of businesses in, against the employees, there's collateral damage there. If we tip the scales the other way, there's collateral damage. And if we try to even it out, which I think that's what this body is here to do, is to balance those scales as much as possible, this is the mechanism to do it, I think, Mr. President. On and for the amendment.
Senator Gru.
Thank you, Mr. President. On and against. Yesterday, in committee, we heard over 50 witnesses. Not one business owner spoke in favor of this bill. Period. We did our best to try to work through the bill and take out some of the more onerous provisions that would put our businesses at peril. Today, starting with this amendment, we seem to be wanting to put the ones we took out back. I understand. And I also understand my good friend from Beggs, when he talks about that we shouldn't suppose the outcome of what the federal government's going to do. I agree. But I know what's going to happen in my business come Saturday morning. It's not hypothetical. I know what's going to happen in a lot of other businesses come Saturday morning, and it's not hypothetical. And actually, it was articulated very well by my good friend from the North. I don't understand, frankly, and this is a crux of this for me, I don't understand as a business owner where all of a sudden, my employees became my enemy. For 44 years, my employees were my family, my friends, and my colleagues. As of this morning, when we opened the doors at 5:15 in the two states that I operate in, as far as I know, that was still true. But yet here on the floor, in this hallowed chamber, all I've been here in the last few days is, is a talk that frankly is good for a union hall, but not quite as what I envision for the business people of Wyoming. Make no mistake, I'm not pleased with federal mandates about vaccines. I talked about that the other day. But what we're doing here, make no mistake, no hypothesis necessary, we're putting a federal mandate on that side of the room, we're on this side of the room, we're drawing our guns, and every business owner in the state is in the middle. Collateral damage? Forget about economic development. Forget about making this state a better state. Forget about diversification. We're taking steps backwards. On and against. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Senator Hutchings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope I'm coming through clearly. On and for the amendment. I'm listening to my fellows, and I understand they're passionate, please, but the Constitution is our rulebook, and it's the book that got me here. If I hadn't studied this book with a group of people, I never would have been asked to run for office. In Article 1, Section 8, clauses 1 through 18, there's nowhere listed where the federal government that we, the states, created can operate under the process of extortion. You do this, or I'm going to do that to you. That's what we're seeing here. That's the fear that I'm hearing. In the Ninth Amendment, it says, "The enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people." I have an amendment coming up, and the main reason I'm here is because the people have asked me to come, stop the mandates, stand up to our federal government, not to shoot guns at them, not to flip the finger at them, if I'm allowed to say that, not to put my fist up to the federal government, but to stand up for what's right. On and for the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chair, oh, Mr. President.
Further discussion? Senator Kinsky, for your second time.
For my second and final time. My heart is with you, Senator. We don't know whether the courts are. We're not asking anybody to prostrate themselves before the federal government. We want to pass a bill that conflicts with theirs. We want to sue. We want to stay enforcement. And then we want to get, fight like the dickens and get in front of the court system and see if this is one that we can actually win. There's some hope, some hope for a victory, given some recent decisions from the Supreme Court. Make no mistake about it, I favor the Tenth Amendment, but it's been out of favor with the courts for 60, 70 years. So maybe we can win one. Maybe. Yes, we have a $10 million fund. It'll be years before this is resolved in the courts. If you think legislature's slow, wait till you get a load of the federal court system. In the long run, we may win. In the short run, the businesses are caught up in the middle. We don't need to speculate on what the feds will do. My friend from Devil's Tower already said it, their actions speak louder than words. They have already, in a bold, audacious, breathtaking power grab, said they will cut off Medicare/Medicaid payments, they will expand their reach under OSHA, and if the states don't enforce it, they will, and they have already done that with four states. They will cut off anybody that's now getting grants, and they will deny business to anybody that has contracts. That is what they have said. We haven't seen the final regulation, but we know that's what's in it. We're not rolling the dice. If we set up a conflict between us and the feds that we begin enforcing immediately, we know exactly what will happen. The businesses will be caught in the middle, the hospitals will be caught in the middle. We know what they'll do. They'll opt to adhere to the federal mandate because the second choice is bankruptcy. And so are we really going to do that? No. We're not going to enforce that. So let's put it in here that we're not going to enforce it, pending the outcome of litigation. On and against the amendment.
Further discussion? We're back to the floor later now, for your second time, Senator-
Mr. President, my second time. Folks, let's shake our fist at the man. I encourage you all, every one of you, let's do it. Let's not put a business in front. Do it yourself. That's the truth. What we've done is put businesses up in front. We said, "You take the hit." We're not the ones doing it. The truth is, we're fighting mandates, but you're using a business to do it. And do you know what the businesses are? A good friend from up in the Northwest said, "It's exactly, it's not this big monster that you see. My businesses, my kids, my friends, people I've worked with for my whole life, they're individuals, folks." And what you're saying is, you're putting them up front. Let's push them out. It's the same people. It's part of us. We're all frustrated. We all want to fight. But do you want to fight your own fight, or do you want to shove the economic viability of the state and our businesses out front and throw them under the bus, and there's still no difference? You're still mad at the man. Shake your fist, folks, but don't use our businesses to throw them under the bus to do it, because they're the ones that are going to suffer, and they don't have a recourse. The truth is, $10 million? 10 million. Any of you ever looked up a Supreme Court case and looked what the cost? If you looked at the time, 10 million bucks won't buy you a good entrance in the door in a DC firm for a Supreme Court case. It's a joke. And by the time it happens, you may have some people that are in here that don't have their businesses anymore, because the legislature may not have time to act quick enough. Pretty interesting. It's a, it's a gamble. I get in a little trouble over gambling stuff, but it really is. Do we want to gamble with our future? We all need to stand up. We need to shake our fist. We didn't get hired down here to gamble, to come take chances with the state, and that's what we're doing.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Let's go to Senator Biedman for your second time.
Thank you, Mr. President, for my final time. I just urge us to do something. We have a choice. To send a strongly worded letter and shake our fists and stomp our feet, but ultimately do nothing? I don't think that's why the folks back home sent us down here. I don't think that's why, what we're here to do. They want action. They want us to do something, and they want us to stand up for their rights. If we don't pass this amendment, the bill really doesn't do much. Sorry. And to answer the thing about the $10 million, that gets us to the next, a few months until we come back in February. If we need more, we can put more in there. This is a fight. We must fight. We must put that money in there. If it's not enough, we'll address it in February. 10 million should get us till February. And people are watching. They are desperate. They want us to pass something meaningful. Let's make it meaningful. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? We'll go back to the sponsor now. Senator Steinmetz.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good debate and important things to my good fellow tall senator from Teton County. It isn't us that is making you at odds with your employees, it's the federal government. And what's happening is, the mandate is being passed down through the businesses into the employees and to individual lives. And we've talked a lot about businesses. I'm a small business owner, too. I get it. I understand. I mean, I was shut down for months with this COVID thing. We're still recovering from the effects of COVID. I understand. But are we going to draw the line in the sand or not? Are we actually going to stand up and do something or not? Are we all going to stand on the same side, the state of Wyoming, employers and employees, and demand state sovereignty and that they respect our rights? This is a defining moment for our citizens and for the state of Wyoming. And I haven't heard anyone talk about Sally. Sally, who may be a single mom who's worked at a job for 15 years, who has good benefits and retirement, and she can't make another choice to get the kind of earnings that she's earning right now, but unless she abandons her rights of conscience or her sincerely held religious belief or maybe a medical condition to get a vaccine, she may be denied that exemption and have to find other employment. What about her? What about her kids? We have to strike some balance here. We can't make things out of kilter. And so we have to think about our citizens, too. And that's what we're seeking to do in this bill. And I just want to remind us who we answer to. In Article 1, Section 1, "Power inherited in the people." "All power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness, and for the advancement of these ends, they have at all times an inalienable and indefeasable right to alter, reform, or abolish the government in such manner as they think proper." So I believe this puts us all on the same side, that we can battle the federal government together. The federal government is the one that is passing this mandate down to our business and through our businesses to the citizens, and so I'd urge you to vote aye on the amendment.
Ready for the question? Question being called. This is on second reading amendment number one to House Bill 1001. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
No.
Eyes have it. Division being called. All those in favor, stand. Those opposed, stand. Thirteen, thirteen. Fails. Continuing with amendments on House Bill One Zero Zero One. Second Reading Amendment Number Two to House Bill One Zero Zero One. Please read it in.
House Bill One Zero Zero One, Second Reading Amendment Number Two to Engrossed Copy Corrected Copy, Page Four, Line Sixteen.
Again, this is engrossed copy corrected copy, Senator Steinman. Oh, Senator Salazar, you just got handed the job.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move Second Reading Amendment Number Two to House Bill One Zero Zero One and ask for your favorable consideration. Honorable, Mr. President, honorable members, what this amendment does is simply deletes the standing committee amendment and returns it back to the engrossed version on page four, line twenty-two, and on page five, line one. After, uh, after, um, it reinserts, um, after practice, the word registered on both, uh, page four and page five. But I would bring to the body's attention the fundamental change, which is that it reinstates the word shall. An employee shall be granted an exemption for religious grounds upon submission of a, of a exemption. So, Mr. President, members of the body, the reason I bring this forward is that I believe that the burden of one's religious beliefs to object to a shot or a vaccination should not be on the individual. And I believe that the religious exemption should be granted. We have a longstanding history of religious freedom in this country. And quite frankly, I and others object to have to prove our beliefs before a government or for that same government to verify such beliefs. Our founding fathers believed that broad religious freedom and tolerance was essential to a successful republic. When great crises occur, whether it be a war or social upheaval or even a pandemic, religious freedom must be protected. If we lose that, if we lose our religious freedoms, what are we left with? My name is on this bill. And I will have regretted deeply at being on that bill if I could not protect the citizens that I represent by protecting their religious freedoms. Finally, I would, I would quote our Constitution. "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or of the right of the people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances." I ask for your support. Thank you, Mr. President.
We're Second Reading, Number Two to House Bill One Zero Zero One. Discussion? Any discussion or questions? Senator Salazar?
Mr. President, I ask for a roll call on this.
Thank you. Follow-up roll call. Any further discussion or questions? Ready for the question? Second Reading Amendment Number Two to House Bill One Zero Zero One. Roll call, please.
On the amendment, Anderson? No. Baldwin? No. Bytnan? Aye. Boner?
Aye.
Aye. Bouchard? Aye. Case? No. Cooper? Aye. Driscoll? Aye. Ellis? No. French? Aye. Burfee? No. Guru? No. Hicks? Aye. Hutchings? Aye. James? Aye. Kinskey? No. Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Cost? No. Landon? No. McCune? Aye. Nethercot? No. Pappas and Perkins excused. Rothfuss? No. Salazar?
Aye.
Aye. Schuler? Aye. Scott excused. Steinmetz? Aye. Wasserburger excused. President Docstetter? Aye. Closing vote? Closing vote closed. On the amendment fifteen, aye. Eleven, no. Four, excused.
Second Reading Amendment Number Two to House Bill One Zero Zero One has passed. Okay, follow-up fifteen, fifteen tie. Closer look. Second Reading Amendment Number Two to House Bill One Zero Zero One has failed. Correct. Okay. Just a moment, please. Now we got the official paper copy. We're going to override the digital copy. Ayes fifteen, nays eleven. Majority of the quorum required. The amendment has passed. Again, for the record, for those listening, Second Reading Amendment Number Two to House Bill One Zero Zero One has passed the Senate. Second Reading Amendment Number Three to House Bill One Zero Zero One. Please read it in.
House Bill One Zero Zero One, Second Reading Amendment Number Three to Engrossed Copy Corrected Copy, Page Four, Line Sixteen.
Again, this is engrossed copy corrected copy. Senator Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would like to withdraw Second Reading Amendment Number Three to House Bill One Zero Zero One.
Absent objection. Second Reading Amendment Number Three to House Bill Zero Zero One has been withdrawn. Second Reading Amendment Number Four to House Bill One Zero Zero One. Reading clerk, please read it in.
House Bill One Zero Zero One, Second Reading Amendment Number Four to Engrossed Copy, Page Five, Line Six.
Senator Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move Second Reading Amendment Four to House Bill One Thousand and One and encourage an aye vote. Simple amendment, senators, in, uh, it's either an aye or a no. You vote what you feel. But I brought this as I was reading through the bill and the amendments. It came to my attention that as, as we talk about OSHA and some of the other things that are going to come down as they read through whatever we pass here today, tomorrow, or whenever we pass it, they're going to look for some red flags and some things that will say automatically say, they don't meet our criteria. They're out of compliance. We automatically are going to reject this. And this came to my attention. I believe this is one of those things. And this is the notation in our bill or in our amendments that says that the, the antibody test is something that we can do or a previous exposure to, to the disease. I receive in my email every week a report called the monthly mortality. So my mind is already confused. The mortality. Anyway, it's a report of evolving science about the antibodies and about everything infectious disease. Mortality and morbidity weekly report. I knew I'd get it eventually.
We're going to have you say it quicker, faster next time.
I can't say it fast, though, so. Anyway, is that the latest one that came out is reporting the findings. They explore the antibodies and, and the effectiveness of those antibodies. And similar to other diseases and other vaccinations and other things that evolve, when you've had the infection of COVID and you develop those antibodies over time, senators, it lessens the effectiveness. It's going down. Now, I suspect that that's going to happen on an ongoing basis. As we do that, you know, it's been around since we got out of session two years ago. We started talking about COVID. Now we're two years or a little over a year and a half into it, and they're already noting that it's subsiding. Those antibodies will be present if they test for them, but they may or may not be effective. And that's why if you, if any of you recall, the pertussis vaccine, or pertussis is a shot that you got when you were a kid. It's a vaccine that you got when you were kids. As we found out, the pertussis was becoming more and more predominant. They went back and did some studies on why that was happening. And it was happening because that pertussis shot that you got as a kid, that vaccination that you got was no longer really working all that well. Or if you had pertussis as a child, the antibodies weren't as strong. Which is why now, if you go into the hospital to visit a newborn, your grandchild, your child, it's required that you have that pertussis vaccination updated. And I, I would compare that to, to this shot or to this disease. Once you've had COVID, and I suspect a number of us have had it, I have the antibodies right now. But five years from now, four years from now, however far down the road, we know at two years, they're already diminishing. And to put that in as a requirement, I, I believe is going to be a red flag. I think when they develop the rules and they look at our states, they're going to say, that's not indicative of something that's valuable that protects that patient or protects the people that they're going in to see. So my, my amendment would take just that piece out. It leaves all the EEOC stuff in that we talked about yesterday and just takes that single piece out about the antibodies or documentation of previous, previous infection. Thank you, President.
Okay, folks, we are on Second Reading Amendment Number Four to House Bill One Zero Zero One. Is there any further discussion or questions? Senator Bouchard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the example that was used on on a vaccine is, uh, it's documented, it's a leaky vaccine. That's why it wanes. That's exactly what's going on with the vaccine that they have now with COVID. We also have treatments that, that we use for antibodies that are not a vaccine. That's the one that's being, I would say, slowly rolled out. It's even held back. We don't know where this is going. We're going to have to live with this a long time. We're making policy. And I think that this, that when we, we remove something that we're trying to put here to protect people, we're doing the wrong thing. We need to keep this protection here because we don't, they don't know everything about these antibodies. And if we're going to use an argument on a leaky vaccine, that kind of negates the reason that you're bringing the amendment because that's kind of what's happening now. So I, I would be, uh, I would tell the body to vote no on this amendment.
Further discussion? Let's go Senator Bytnan, then back to Senator Hicks. Senator Bytnan?
Thank you, Mr. President. On and against the amendment? I think it's important that we include this antibody language and prior infection. If you already just had the disease or the infection, you know, to force somebody to get a vaccine against it could be detrimental to their health. It doesn't make, it's common sense. If you just had something, you're going to have the best immunity to it. The God-given immunity that your immune system produces to fight off this vaccine or fight off this, uh, disease. It should be included. Uh, it's common sense. And I would just also reiterate what the previous speaker said. We're, we're having these, quote, breakthrough cases where the vaccine is failing. When your birth control fails, we don't call it a breakthrough pregnancy. We call it birth control failure. And what we're seeing is this vaccine is failing. People that are fully vaccinated, they've got their third, fourth, fifth. I don't know what booster shot we're up to, but it's not working out for some of these people. What is working is our natural body can, ninety-nine percent of us can beat this COVID-19. It's tough. A lot of us ended up in the hospital, but we beat it. Our bodies produce the antibodies to defeat this thing. It's, the mortality rate is less than one percent. Let's keep that in mind when we're making policy. But we also have to use common sense and keep this language in the bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Vice President Hicks? Oh, and then we'll go to the screen with Senator Boner.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I do give deference to my colleague who's involved in the medical profession on these issues, but I have to stand up and speak against this because a few years ago, there was a group of psychologists and they went in and they did a very detailed analysis of how federal agencies go through a decision-making process. And they coined the term "the science of applied ignorance," Mr. President. And through that process, they identified two components of that that, that oftentimes the only thing is reported is those things that were expected and those things that were unexpected or never reported. And my concern here is to illustrate that. We have seen on numerous occasions, the CDC in the last eighteen months reversed a decision. We've seen our healthcare advisors in different capacities at the federal level reverse their decision. And so I'm not convinced that the entire body of science is available to make good decisions at this point in time. My biggest fear is, is that we have a situation here, which I don't know, but I have a concern that falls into the realm of the science of applied ignorance, that we're only reporting what was already preconceived and comport with what a political position is rather than the actual science. Not saying it's not correct, Mr. President. I'm just saying I've got concerns, given the number of reversals on numerous occasions of reports of what does and doesn't work for therapeutics, the effect of vaccines for different individuals. Uh, we've seen competing science out there. We've seen competing reports. And we've seen competing and reversal of positions by our federal health officials. So it gives me grave concern that based on one study, that now we're going to set policy, uh, at this level. And I do think it would be incumbent at this point in time to leave the language as it is and defeat the amendment.
Senator Boner on the screen, and then we'll come to you, Senator James.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate this amendment and the, uh, thought of our Chairman of Labor and Health Committee. Another four against the amendment, but, but looking at this language, certainly I'd like to point out that I think the language needs some improvement. I'm not even sure if it really, as it's written, achieves the objective that we're looking for, which is, you know, recognizing that natural immunity does in fact work in some cases. But it also needs to acknowledge, acknowledge an element of this discussion that it doesn't get a whole lot of public discussion, which I, it seems to me, if anybody with a medical background could correct me if I'm wrong, that this virus is going to be with us forever indefinitely. Uh, we're just trying to manage the transition, um, as a society to this new, uh, virus. And, um, whether you, uh, want to believe mostly in the vaccine or natural immunity, I think that suffice to say, five, ten years from now, may, my, maybe none of those methods are going to be as effective as they are today. So I, I'm just thinking of some language that would, uh, could be added to page five, line seven, engrossed copy that, um, says something along the lines that has been tested, previously tested positive for COVID-19 in a matter which is, or, um, likely to, uh, induce immunity, uh, currently. And so obviously, if you've had COVID five years ago, you know, looking towards the future, you know, I, I don't think that's going to be terribly effective in whatever new variants we have at that time. So I would think this is an area of the bill that needs improvement. I'm not sure if I'm going to vote for or against the amendment as it has, as we have it before us, but I think it's a topic of further discussion.
Thank you, Senator James.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know personally, I don't want my immune system to be taken out of consideration. When I came down with COVID, I had no symptoms. I didn't lose any taste, no smell, nothing. I was, I wasn't allowed to go anywhere, but I didn't have anything. I know anytime when I was in the military, they made me get vaccinated. I'm sick as a dog every time. Anytime I have to take a vaccine, it affected me negatively. My immune system is far stronger than any vaccine out there, but I, I much prefer my own immune system over anything man-made. So, yeah, I don't want my, uh, immune system and antibodies being taken out of consideration. antibodies being taken out of consideration. And I don't think anyone else is shut either.
Further discussion? Let's go to Senator Rothfuss, Mr. Floor Leader. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, for my first time. It's dangerous when a body of non-experts starts debating science and judging what is and is not correct, asserting third, fourth, fifth-hand information about what is factual and what is not factual, and whether our immune system is or is not better than vaccination. We have actually one individual in this chamber that is a trained medical expert. That's the individual that brought this particular amendment. Because the amendment's based on sound science and the best available science. The idea that the scientific community has been flip-flopping all over the past couple of years and changing their mind frequently is factually inaccurate. When you go back and look through the literature, and by that I mean the scientific literature, the journal articles, the evidence, the double-blind studies, the work that was done by the scientific community, not the articles on Facebook or in media, and I shouldn't have said that particular proper noun, my apologies, Mr. President, in the media, that's not, that's not where you look to find out if there's internal consistency. You look to the actual data and research. And there is uncertainty in science. It is not an all-knowing institution. It builds towards consensus. Proper science does eventually change its mind from time to time when data and reasoning proves something false. That's a good thing. You don't want scientists that won't change or won't reflect on their views. But the idea that we can stand here and say, well, our personal immune system is great. It's all we need, when all of us have had the good fortune, hopefully, of getting vaccinated for diphtheria, probably for influenza at some point or another, for measles, for mumps, for rubella, for pertussis, previously for polio, and shut those diseases down and ended a tremendous amount of death and suffering. This vaccine works. It's not perfect. I don't know that we've ever created as humans a perfect vaccine that always works. It just doesn't happen that way. Vaccination is triggering an immune response from you. It's not doing the magic itself. It's telling your immune system, hey, look at this, because the next time you see it, it's going to be for real. You should develop an immune response to it. And then your immune system says, ah, now I'll recognize that. That's what they all do. It is your immune system that we're relying upon with vaccination. We're just giving it a tip-off, a little heads-up beforehand that something bad might come down the pike. So we're valuing that. We're using that skillset. But to stand here and indict it with misinformation and counterfactual information, I don't think is the responsibility of this body, Mr. President. Let's listen to our one expert that thinks this is a good amendment, because this is the area of his expertise. I think we should defer to him. I vote aye.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Senator Bouchard?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'm kind of glad we're talking about this because I believe the previous speaker is not an expert either, but I do know a little bit about the subject because there are studies. We were talking about whooping cough. And it has made a resurgence. And what the numbers show is that the vaccine simply didn't work in some patients, that the vaccine-induced protection waned over time, and the protection provided by the vaccine was leaky or imperfect. And the numbers show that 10% of the patients see their protection disappear completely within a decade. However, 55% of the patients, protection remains. There's some people that don't have protection, but it doesn't affect them because it affects children. If we're going to use science to make policy, let's look at the science and the numbers. We know that people get COVID and survive. I'm one of them. I didn't take anything. I know other people that didn't take any. And you're, what you're telling me is, I got to get the jab because somebody tells me. That's why we have this session. That's why we're here. There's some of us saying no. I'd like to call for a recorded vote.
Roll call required, called for. That was your second time. Let's go back to Vice President Hicks. Go ahead, Senator.
Mr. President, just a few thoughts on here as regards to the body of science. And I just wondered with this voluminous body of science, when COVID-19 or 2019 showed up on the world stage in December of 2019. So what are we, just a few months down the road, less than two years, and there's this giant body of science out there that provides us all the definitive decisions as to what works and what doesn't work, Mr. President. And so again, I would, I would reiterate that I don't know the answer. Well, we're not here debating the science, in my opinion. I'm debating a policy here. The policy is, is should we provide that employers provide an exemption if somebody can show they have the antibody? That's not a discussion of whether they do or don't, whether antibodies are more effective or not effective. It's a policy that says that an employer, if you're going to do a vaccine mandate, you at least have to at some point in time, not only just say that you're vaccinated, but if you can demonstrate that you have the antibodies in the system, whether it was from vaccination or actually contracting the disease, it's a policy decision, folks. It's not a debate on the science. And so again, I do give due deference to my colleague with his medical background, but I don't believe the whole 16 or 17 months of preponderance of the body of the evidence has provided a definitive decision is on any of these issues. So I'm more inclined at this point in time to not debate the science and debate the policy. And the policy is, is that is, is that is a reasonable accommodation that you could provide as an employer to employee if you want a medical exemption. And if you can demonstrate that you had the disease and you have the antibodies, it's reasonable, Mr. President. I believe it is a reasonable policy decision that this body should make on and against the amendment.
Thank you, Senator. That was your second time. Any further discussion? Let's go to the sponsor, Senator Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate all the good discussion. You know, when I went into my short legislative career, I never thought that I would be talking science or medicine on the Senate floor, nor did I think that in my office with my patients I would ever be discussing politics. This year and last year, that all changed. With that in mind, I do believe what the previous speaker says, that this is a policy decision. I believe that's absolutely correct. That's what we're here for. And I don't believe that we're here to set, set those policy decisions based on, on my expertise, as it's been said. I don't consider myself an expert. I do have medical knowledge, but I do know people with a lot of expertise that I talk with on a frequent basis because I think that's my, my responsibility, my other, one of my other lives, is to take that decision and that information to my patients and give them the best information that I can. And I don't derive that information from social media. I derive that information from valid scientific studies, from people that, that that's their job, is to review studies, to review what's going on. And it's evolving. We don't know everything yet, and we, and we're not going to know it for a while. We don't know all the information on diseases that have been around for 20, 50, 100 years. We're still learning. Fortunately, we're learning, we're evolving, and we're getting appropriate things. This amendment comes to you as a policy statement, and that policy is that I think that we base too much on, on what our knowledge of science is or isn't, and putting it in there. And I think it's an overreach on our part to test for antibodies. And I think it's a red flag. I think it's one of those things that when they come down with the mandates and say the state of Wyoming is not in compliance, so we are not going to accept what they've given us. And I believe that that's what I was looking at. And I think it's a safer bet, and it, it may not be the only red flag in this bill or in other bills that we consider, but I think it's a big red flag, and I think it's one we can avoid. I would encourage it. I vote.
Thank you. Roll call being requested. Clerk, please call the roll.
Second reading amendment number four, roll call. Anderson?
Aye.
Baldwin?
Aye.
Byteman?
No.
Boner?
No.
No. Bouchard?
No.
Case?
No.
Cooper?
No.
Driscoll?
No.
Ellis?
No.
French?
No.
Furphy?
Aye.
Guru?
Aye.
Hicks?
No.
Hutchings?
No.
James?
No.
Kinsky?
Aye.
Cole?
No.
No. Cost?
Aye.
Landon?
Aye.
McEwen?
No.
No. Nethercutt?
Aye.
Pappas and Perkins excused. Rothfuss?
Aye.
Salazar?
No.
Schuler?
No.
Scott excused. Steinmetz?
No.
Wasserbrucker excused. President Doc Stetter?
No.
Closing vote? Closing vote closed on the amendment. Nine aye, 17 no, four excused.
Second reading amendment number four to House Bill 1001 has failed. Continuing now with amendments. Second reading amendment number five to House Bill 1001. Reading clerk, please read it in.
House Bill 1001, second reading amendment number five to engrossed copy, page one, line seven.
Says the engrossed copy is Senator Steinmetz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move second reading amendment number five to House Bill 1001 and ask for your favorable consideration. Good senators, this amendment goes on page one after line 12, and we're going to insert the definitions of COVID-19, COVID-19 vaccines and public entities. The reason for this insertion is because, as you know, these definitions are already included in this piece of legislation, but this is non-codified law. This part would actually be codified law, and that's why we are inserting this again. What this basically does is this is the section E we took out of House Bill 1002, and it is the, you could call it the vaccine passport language. However, it only is for a public entity. It has nothing to do with private businesses, but we know public entities are also employers. Public entities receive public funding, and they, I just believe that with taxpayer dollars involved, they should not be able to deny or require a person to receive or show proof of COVID-19 vaccination for the person to receive or qualify for any public benefit to which a person is entitled. So that is the gist of the amendment. I will refresh your memory of what a public entity is. Public entity means the state of Wyoming or any state office, board, council, commission, separate operating agency, department, institution, or other instrumentality or operating unit of the state, including the University of Wyoming, any political subdivision of the state, any county, city, town, school district, community college district, or any public corporation of the state. So with that, Mr. President, I would ask for your favorable consideration.
Second reading amendment number five to House Bill 1001. Any further discussion or questions?
Question?
On the screen, Senator Boner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a brief question as to what the current status is, as I'm sure we all remember, the chief executive issued an executive order that was a very similar, preventing these sort of passport requirements and state buildings, at least. So just a brief overview of where we're at now and what exactly would change if we vote for this amendment.
Further questions or discussion? Senator Steinmetz, we're back to the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the question. We're just codifying what the chief executive has already done and backing him up in his decision. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. With that, are you ready for the question? Question being called. This is on second reading amendment number five to House Bill 1001. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Second reading amendment number five to House Bill 1001 has passed the Senate. Second reading amendment number six to House Bill 1001 engrossed copy. Reading clerk, please read it in.
House Bill 1001, second reading amendment number six to engrossed copy, page two, lines five through 10.
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. President, I would move second reading amendment number six to House Bill 1001. Members of the body, this is just a technical cleanup that our LSO staff found, just a renumbering error, and then some verbiage in there on page four and line eight. We just inserted not requiring a mandate of COVID-19 vaccine to make a conforming amendment. I'd ask for your favorable consideration of an aye vote on this technical correction.
Questions or discussion? Chairman Ellis.
Yeah, this is John Cole.
Wait, wait a minute. Senator Cole, we're going to come to you. We're going to Senator Ellis first.
Oh, I'm in the middle of a Zoom call.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator Cole, we appreciate that. We need you to mute, my friend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if I'm missing something, but the prior amendment we just adopted, I don't know if this is still necessary or if that was in the corrected because we just codified all that, to my understanding. So I'm wondering if this amendment is necessary. Thank you, Mr. President.
And cue any further discussion or questions? Let's go back to the sponsor then. Vice President? Oh, Senator Cole, I don't, I don't think he needed to speak, so go ahead, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. President, I'll have to ask for a restatement of that. I could not hear my colleague's question. If we could get a little closer for us people that have slight hearing impairments, it would be helpful. Thank you.
Give us a review. Senator Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. President. We just passed the prior amendment, which codified the language that's on page two referenced in this amendment. So I'm wondering if this is still necessary in light of the fact that we just passed the last amendment. It's a technical question.
Senator Hicks?
Mr. President, I think that is an absolute good question. So to answer that, because we have a third reading at this point in time to get a definitive answer from our LSO staff as they track in those amendments, I will withdraw this amendment, which you could expect it as a third reading amendment, if in fact it still has applicability. So I'll withdraw this amendment at this time.
Without objection, second reading amendment number six to House Bill 1001 has been withdrawn. Second reading amendment number seven to House Bill 1001. Reading clerk, please read it in. This is engrossed copy.
House Bill 1001, second reading amendment number seven to engrossed copy. Delete thee.
Senator Hutchings?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move second reading amendment number seven to House Bill 1001 and ask for your favorable consideration. When I wrote this, I wrote it long before the bill actually came over. I thought about it this weekend, Mr. Chairman. And I thought long and hard after Friday's events. And I thought, I didn't come down here on my own accord. I came down here because the citizens were calling me, the citizens were writing me saying, please stop the mandates. And as I looked over the mandate, I see that in my eyes, it violates at least 10 Wyoming Constitution articles and sections, especially in Article One and Article 10, and it violates our U.S. Constitution, Article One, clauses eight, or Section Eight, clauses one through 18, and Article Two, and some of our U.S. Constitution amendments. So because I've been asked to come down here, I decided with this amendment, what I would try to do is, number one, go through the bill and just delete entirely. go through the bill and just delete entirely in Section One, or on page one, up until line, excuse me, on line four, up to the word employment, insert a semicolon, and pretty much stop at that point. We will not mandate the vaccinations here in Wyoming. That's the gist of this bill. Continuing on to page two, we're gonna delete pages two, pages, I believe, two. Excuse me, on line four, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna delete pages two and three. And on page four, after employment, insert, provided that the COVID testing of employees in a form and frequency that is consistent with current public health guidelines shall be offered to employees when available, and delete the balance of the line. We go through and delete the rest of pages four, we delete page five, pages six, seven, eight, all the way up to page ten, where we keep the standing committee appropriations, standing committee amendment on lines one through nine, lines fourteen through twenty-two. So I'm saying we won't have the mandates. Employers can do testing and we'll, we'll wait until our lawsuit comes to its fruition and then we'll decide what's going on. And I know this caused a lot of division in the First Amendment, but I'm getting emails from constituents, very concerned, some have lost their jobs, some have families, some are waiting to lose their jobs. And they talk to me about natural immunities. They talk to me about alternative preventative measures. They talk to me about therapeutic measures. They talk to me about the right of conscience, medical and religious concerns. So I went to the White House website and I found on there a path out of the pandemic that the president has set out, a little plan. And on his plan out there, one of the things, directions he's given OSHA would be to ask for mandates or testing as a remedy. If we allow the employers to force a drug upon their employees without knowing the immediate or future health implications, we are making the employee no better than a slave. This mandate will have a domino effect that we will never recover from. I see no police officers, or fewer, fewer firefighters, fewer nurses and doctors, which means there'll be fewer jobs, actually. Fewer laws being obeyed, crime will increase, that's my assumption. This amendment will allow us to have a stay until the state lawsuit is resolved and allow the employer to follow the plan that's on the White House website and make sure their employees are tested and hopefully by being tested, we can find out, hopefully, daily, weekly basis.
Senator, you're at time.
Time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead and give us, if you want to wrap up here.
Just wrap up really quickly. This is not a shaking of the fist, this is not going into battle. This is not a gamble, but this is standing on the Supreme Law of the Land and I welcome your comments.
Thank you. Further discussion, we are on second reading amendment number seven to House Bill one zero zero one. Senator Ellis.
Mr. President, I'd like to call for the ayes and nays on this one.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Ayes and nays called for, vote. Second reading amendment number seven to House Bill one zero zero one, clerk, call the roll.
Second reading amendment number seven, roll call. Anderson? Aye. Baldwin? Aye. Bateman? Aye. Boner?
No.
No? Bouchard? No? Case? Aye. Cooper? Aye. Driscoll? Aye. Ellis?
Aye.
Aye. French? Aye. Furphy? Aye. Guru? Aye. Hicks? No? Hutchings? Aye. James? No? Kinsky? Aye. Cold?
No.
No? Cost? Aye. Landon? Aye. McEwen? No? Nethercutt? Aye. Pappas and Perkins excused. Rothfuss? Aye. Salazar? No? Schuler? Aye. Scott excused. Steinmetz? No? Wasserberger excused. President Docstetter? No? Bateman, aye to no? Closing vote? Closing? Vote closed on the amendment. Sixteen aye, ten no, four excused.
Amendment has passed, second reading amendment number two, number seven to House Bill one zero zero one. We are back on the bill. House Bill, House Bill one zero zero one, having been read two separate times, the question is, shall the bill be read a third time? Hearing no objection, it is so ordered. House Bill one zero zero two, second reading of the House bill.
House Bill one zero zero two, federal COVID vaccine mandates, prohibition and remedies two, an act relating to the protection of individual rights.
Our amendments. Second reading amendment number one to House Bill one zero zero two. Reading clerk, read it in.
House Bill one zero zero two, second reading amendment number one, to engross copy, page five after line ten.
Senator Steinmetz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move second reading amendment number one to House Bill one zero zero two and ask for the body's favorable consideration. Fellow senators, I just thought, since we were quoting the rest of Article One, Section thirty-eight, we should include the rest of it, which is Section D. And it says, Article One, Section thirty-eight, subsection D of the Wyoming Constitution provides that the state of Wyoming shall act to preserve these rights from undue governmental infringement. I would ask for your favorable consideration. If there's no questions, I call for the questions.
Question?
Question being called. There's no discussion. This is on second reading amendment number one to House Bill one zero zero two. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The amendment has passed. Second reading amendment number two to House Bill one zero zero two, engrossed copy, corrected copy. Reading clerk, read it in.
House Bill one zero zero two, second reading amendment number two, to engross copy, corrected copy, page seven, lines fifteen through twenty.
Senator Steinmetz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move second reading amendment two to House Bill one zero zero two and ask for your favorable consideration. Fellow senators, this could be a short discussion as we're just simply removing the word "not" from the amendment. We moved yesterday the committee of the whole amendment or the standing committee amendment from the Appropriations Committee on page one. The section that is starting on line thirty-nine, it just basically takes the word "not" out of that section. And so it would do the same thing we looked at doing with the last bill. So, you know, vote it up, vote it down, vote your conscience. We've had the debate on this, but I wanted to put it out for you since it was such a close vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Discussion on the amendment, questions? Discussion? Question on the amendment? Question being called. Second reading amendment number two to House Bill one zero zero two, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. Amendment has failed. Division being called. All those in favor, please stand. Twelve aye. All those opposed, please stand. Fourteen, the amendment has failed. That's second reading amendment number two to House Bill one zero zero two. Now on to second reading amendment number three to House Bill one zero zero two, reading clerk, please read it in.
House Bill one zero zero two, second reading amendment number three, to engross copy, page six, line two.
Senator Hicks.
Mr. President, I move second reading amendment number three to House Bill one zero zero two and ask for your favorable consideration. Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to divide the amendment.
Without objection, show us where you're at, where you want to divide, Senator.
Division one is page one, line one through line thirty-seven. Division two is the remainder of the amendment.
All right, for the record, division one on second reading amendment number three to House Bill one zero zero two. First division is line one through thirty-seven on page one. And second division is the remainder of the amendment on to page two. Senator Hicks.
Mr. President, the way the current configuration in this bill, it relies heavily on the doctrine of anti-commandeering. With that said, when we go into division one on here, page six, line eleven, we bring in, and this goes into the findings section within the bill. So this just adds additional findings to the bill that are consistent with three Supreme Court rulings on the anti-commandeering doctrine, and I'll just paraphrase them. The first one on page six, after line ten, this language is paraphrased from a summary of New York versus the United States in nineteen ninety-two. Justice O'Connor writing for the majority brought in this language that under the separation of powers, that initial matter of the federal government may not simply commandeer the legislative process of this state by directly compelling them to enact and enforce a federal regulatory program. While Congress and the federal executive branch have substantial powers to govern the nation directly, including in the area, in the areas of intimate concern to the states, the United States Constitution has never been understood to confer upon the federal government the ability to require the states to govern according to the instructions of the federal government. Mr. President, it brings in another subsection, Romanet eighteen. This is based on Independent Businesses versus Sebelius in 2012, Chief Justice Roberts writing for the majority. I will paraphrase, "Our system of government rests on what might be first seemed a counterintuitive insight that freedom is enhanced by the creation of two governments, not one. For this reason, the United States Constitution has never been understood to confer upon Congress nor the federal executive branch the ability to require states to govern according to their instructions. Otherwise, the two-government system established by the framers would give way to a system that best power in one central government and individual liberties would suffer." Mr. President brings in Romanet nineteen. This is a case of Murphy versus the NCAA in 2018, Justice Alito writing for the majority. Summary of the decision, "The directive issued by the federal executive branch and the forthcoming rules by the federal agency regarding COVID-19 vaccine mandates cannot be more direct affront." This is where we bring in the discussion from that particular Supreme Court ruling. Cannot be a more direct affront to state sovereignty. The state of Wyoming directs these device, excuse me, Mr. President, the state of Wyoming rejects these devices by the federal government under the anti-commandeering doctrine. This doctrine is simply that the fundamental structural decision incorporated into the United States Constitution, the decisions to withhold from the federal government the power to issue orders directly to the states. Conspicuency, conspicuously absent from the list of powers given to Congress is the power to issue direct orders to the governments of the states. The anti-commandeering doctrine simply represents the recognition of this limit on the federal authority. Mr. President, on for division one, I would stand for any questions.
Point of order, go ahead.
Point of order, Mr. President, I think lines one through three need to go with both one and two, the first and second divisions.
Lines one through three need to go into division two, would you not? Are you objecting to that, Mr. Vice President, or are you good? Mr. Vice President?
Mr. President, I would have to ask my colleague again to repeat the question, because I could not hear it over the microphone.
Little bit louder, if we could, please, Senator Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lines one through three tell you where this language goes. So I would suggest that lines one through three attach to both division one and division two.
Sponsor agreeable?
Yeah, I believe that's correct, Mr. President.
Absent objection, we are moving lines one through three into division two. Mr. Chairman Case? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think my good colleague from Laramie County pointed out, this is an insertion, the whole thing's an insertion that comes after page six, after line ten. So you need to have that directive language, lines one through three, in both divisions.
Both of them.
That's, I think that's the point she's making. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Vice President?
The motion would be to adopt division one, which includes.
Let's do this, let's have you withdraw your original motion and then state for the record.
Mr. President, I withdraw the previous motion.
Go ahead.
I would further move that division one is lines one through thirty-seven. Division two is lines one through three and thirty-nine through the entirety of the bill. On for division one, Mr. Chairman, would ask for your favorable consideration.
Any discussion on division one? Any discussion on division one? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. Division, division one of second reading amendment number three to House Bill one zero zero two has passed. Now to division two, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Vice President, would you like to introduce division two? Oh, Senator Nethercutt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move division two to standing committee amendment, or I'm sorry, to committee of the whole amendment, second reading amendment number three to House Bill one thousand and two. Clearly, a little rusty, this special session. Good and gracious, has that been, we don't need to read it in, good and gracious senators. I think the language speaks for itself. It is a wonderful litany of our rights. And how could it be wrong, quite possibly? So I'd ask for your favorable consideration.
We are on division two, discussion, division two discussion. Ready for the question? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. Division two has passed, this is on second reading amendment number three to House Bill one zero zero two. Back on the amendment as a whole, then any other further discussion? That is passed, second reading amendment number three to House Bill one zero zero two has passed the Senate. Back on the bill. House Bill one zero zero two, having been read two separate times, the question is, shall the bill be read a third time? Hearing no objection, it is so ordered. House Bill 1002 has passed the Senate on second reading. Senator? Senator Anderson.
Mr. President, in accordance with SR 133, I move that the Senate suspend the Senate Rules 7.1 and 7.3 and 7.8 to allow for the consideration of House Bill 1001, COVID-19 vaccine employer mandates, and House Bill 1002, federal COVID vaccine mandates, prohibition and remedies two, on third reading today.
You have, you have heard the motion pursuant to SR 133. Suspension of the Senate rules requires a two-thirds vote of the members duly elected. This motion is not debatable. Would the chief clerk please call the roll?
Roll call on suspension of the rules. Anderson?
Aye.
Aye. Baldwin? Aye. Bateman? No. Boner?
Aye.
Aye. Bouchard? No. Case? No. Cooper? Aye. Driscoll? Aye. Ellis? No. French? No. Furphy? Aye. Guru? Aye. Hicks? No. Hutchings? No. James? No. Kinsky? Aye. Cole?
No.
No. Cost? Aye. Landon? Aye. McEwen? No. Nethercot? No. Pappas and Perkins excused. Rothfuss? No. Salazar? No. Schuler? Aye. Scott excused. Steinmetz? Aye. Wasserberger excused. President Docstetter?
No.
No. Closing vote. Cooper, aye to no. Closing vote. Closing vote closed. 11 aye, 15 no, four excused.
By your vote of 11 to 15, Senate Rules 7.1, 7.3, and Senate, and 7.8 are not suspended for the consideration of House Bill 1001 and House Bill 1002 on third reading today. Those House bills will be considered on third reading tomorrow, November 3, 2021. Mr. Majority Floor Leader, that clears the desk.
Mr. President, I move we stand recessed until 10:00 p.m. tomorrow, November 3. Stand adjourned, excuse me. Mr. President?
Let's, can we have some discussion? There was some discussion earlier today about a little earlier in the day, Mr. Floor Leader.
10 o'clock. We're coming back. It'll be 10 o'clock.
No earlier?
I don't have any.
Wow, you are a tough, you are a tough floor leader. All right.
Mr. President, I move we stand adjourned until 10:00 p.m. tomorrow.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Hey, I'm, excuse me. Now I really.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Are there any announcements? Any announcements? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion has passed. The Senate will stand recessed until 10:00 a.m. Adjourned, excuse me, will stand adjourned until 10:00 a.m.